And the inauguration of the new council and it will be followed by a dessert reception afterward in the atrium lobby. And I have two proclamations this evening. The first one is proclaiming November is Municipal Government Works Month. And this is something I do every year. And it just is recognizing that municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing residents to have direct access to elected officials. And it's an effort to educate residents about municipal government and the importance of active and informed participation by residents. And then the second proclamation is for Small Business Saturday. And it is to celebrate local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Small businesses employ over 55 percent of the working population in this country. And in Tacoma Park, local businesses create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. So I'm proclaiming November 28th, 2015, a Small Business Saturday. And I urge residents in our community and communities everywhere to support small businesses and merchants on that day and throughout the year. Next item on the agenda is to hear public comments on our voting items this evening. We have four voting items, so we'll take comments on each of them in turn. And after that, then we'll take general comments on other topics. The first one is Agenda Item Number One, which is a Second Reading Ordinance amending Chapter 11.2, Snow and Ice Regulations. If somebody would like to comment.
Does it mean when you say if the snow is at night?
Well, you need to come to the podium and say who you are and then...
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, on snow removal. But first, something you'll know is heartfelt because I'm using part of my three minutes to say it. I want to thank Mayor Williams and Councilmember Grimes for your service. I know we haven't always disagreed, but I know that you've tried to avoid being disagreeable, and I really appreciate that. My thanks to the City Council and staff for escalating the fine for repeatedly failing to clear snow. It's a step in the right direction. At this year's first council meeting, I noted that if we're not enforcing the snow removal laws, and we're not planning on enforcing the snow removal laws, there's no point in changing the snow removal laws. At that time, Councilmember Grime -- excuse me, Councilmember Mail was kind enough to request a written statement on how the code can be enforced. We changed city managers since then, so perhaps that request fell through the cracks. In any case, while the legislation before you does, is accompanied by plans for providing the public with information about the law, as well as plans for volunteer snow removal, I saw no enforcement plan. I hope the council will renew the request for a plan. I hope the plan specifies whether enforcement will be proactive or complaint-based, whether our code enforcement personnel will be involved, whether our nuisance officers will be involved, whether regular officers will be involved, and whether enforcement will begin with warnings or, given parking violation-level fines, will begin with citations. The plan might also identify the metrics to be provided to the council at the end of snow season, such as hours spent on enforcement, the salary cost of those hours, number of warnings issued, number of citations issued, the total amount of those citations, number of fines paid, and the amount of fines paid. Thank you.
Other comments on this Second Reading Ordinance?
Hi, I'm Colleen Cordis in Ward One. And first, I also would really like to thank Mayor Williams and my councilmember Seth Grimes for really doing, you know, wonderful service for the whole city and certainly for our Ward Two, our Ward One also. And just really appreciate -- I know how -- I mean, I'm just so impressed that everyone here is here every Monday night and often working late, as well as all the other things you do through the week. So I really appreciate it, and it's a big part of what makes Tacoma Park what it can be. So I have, you know, communicated with the city manager and the council about the concerns in our North Tacoma neighborhood. I've both talked to people and also on our listserv. And just these deadlines are unreasonable and arbitrary, and they will work for people who get up early in the morning and all the time anyway and work at home. They won't work for a lot of other people, and they're unnecessarily strict. I did go back and review. Probably a lot of people don't recall what the Safe Roadways Committee actually recommended. It did not recommend changing the deadlines. Nothing, not a word in it. What it recommended is what the gentleman before me just spoke about, which is please do something about enforcement for those who don't clear their sidewalks and leave them up to like two weeks at a time without being cleared. So this doesn't seem to get at what the real problem that the committee recommended you And in terms of the city crews, the city manager has suggested that the city crews will be out there clearing sidewalks starting at 6:00 a.m., which is great. Of course, they applied for those jobs, they were paid for that work, they probably may be paid overtime. Homeowners are not, you know, at this point, I don't think you want to treat us as if we're forced unpaid labor. But the idea that we should also be up, you know, between 6:00, certainly by 8:00, have our sidewalks cleared. But I don't see here a commitment from the city manager that the city sidewalks would be cleared by 8:00. Yes, they would start at 6:00, but there's no commitment that this could be done by 8:00. So again, that underlines the unreasonableness of expecting homeowners to do this. The last thing that I wanted to say is that I went back and looked at Boulder, Colorado, which is the town that the Safe Roadways Committee asked the city to try to match its strict enforcement. And its deadline is not 8:00 a.m., it's not noon, it's what Montgomery County's is. It's 24 hours after the end of a snowfall. So I think it's going to be a rush thing to try to do this tonight. I would suggest and urge the council to really reconsider this and to strongly consider the county's policy as in terms of something to try. Thank you.
Other comments?
I'm impressed with the level of professionalism of the other people who spoke. Colleen got me out by saying, "If you don't come, they'll just vote yes and not think about it." And I...
And if you can tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Stephanie. I'm not exactly famous. I live in Ward One on Boston Avenue. And I -- in one of the areas where there is no grass between the curb and the sidewalk. Stephanie Smiley. And I leave for work at 7:00 when there is work. And I have absolutely no idea how I would know before I got up that it had snowed except by checking the weather report. But that's not always perfect, and it might start snowing after I leave. And I just feel like this is making me scared where it shouldn't. I mean, I clear my sidewalks. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other comments? Come on up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Allison Raphael, also from Ward One. I don't have prepared remarks, and I'm shocked that there aren't 4,000 people from my neighborhood here because there was at least that many comments on this policy in the listserv. I think I can speak for pretty much most of the neighborhood in saying that we agree with Colleen, that this is a very arbitrary policy. And it occurred to me today that, for example, let's look at leaves. Leaves are slippery. Leaves can be dangerous in the rain, too. But yet Tacoma Park isn't even picking up the leaves until next week because somehow some people's trees apparently don't drop leaves for another week or so. It's very dangerous out there, but people just have to be careful. And I think the same is true with this. I mean, my husband and I have lived here for over 30 years. We get out there and we do shovel our own walk, but we're in our 70s and it's not as easy to get up, you know, at the crack of dawn and do it anymore. And I also find it really -- I don't think I've ever objected to anything that's been put out by the city before, and I find this truly objectionable.
Thank you.
Mary Jane Matusue, 404 Boyd, Ward Two. I really am angry at the fact that I could get fined for the snow and/or ice, but yet neighbors down the street can have vegetation this high or higher, totally covering the area where I could walk to get away from the ice. And frankly, when it's ice, I'd rather walk on the grass because it can get more traction. I'm 67, and I get better traction. I'm scared to walk on the sidewalks when it's icy, frankly, because I've fallen and broken a couple of bones here from falling on the sidewalk. So I'd much rather fall in the grassy area. But these people, potentially safer airs for me, grassy air, they can -- they have their vegetation all over the place. And they don't never find -- I heard other parts in Tacoma Park, they're fine. I have a friend, there's another section at Tacoma Park, and she said they're very diligent about making people cut down their vegetation. But in our area, evidently, you can do what you want. And I don't mind. I mean, I have a nice neighbor, and there's snow angels, and I thank you for the snow angels. But, you know, it's very arbitrary. I mean, I just suppose not enough kids volunteer one year, you know? And anyways, I wanted to thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Are there any comments on the Agenda Item Number Two, which is the Second Reading Ordinance authorizing installation of traffic coming on the 600 block of Boston Avenue? Seeing none. Are there any comments on Agenda Item Three, which is the Second Reading Ordinance authorizing execution of a payment and move taxes agreement for Hillwood Manor at 1100 Linden Avenue? Seeing none. Finally, is there -- are there any comments on Agenda Item Four, which is a Single Reading Ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for services for a rent analyst? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to any comments on general items, which would be anything that's on our -- well, we don't have a work session agenda, so anything that's not on the agenda.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. This is the four-over-down newsletter put out by the senior program rec. department of Tacoma Park. And it's six times a year, basically. The other day, well, actually about two months ago, I asked if I could put something in it advertising our parents with special needs adults in there. They refused. The director of recreation said there's no way that he would allow this to be put in here because he said it has to have the city's approval. So I'm asking the city's approval, okay? I'm assuming you are the city, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And in this case, the city would be the city manager.
I'm happy to talk with you. I'm happy to talk with you about it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the Crossroads Langley Development and the Hindu Temple of Metropolitan Washington for a wonderful Diwali festival yesterday. I attended it along with the city manager and councilmember Schultz, and it was a terrific day. And I want to thank the rec. department and our police officers for being out there, and I'm hoping it will turn into an annual event. It was a great day. And also, the second thing is just to let people know that many of us on the city council and our two incoming city council members will be sending a letter to the Board of Ed regarding the feasibility study at Piney Branch and asking them to look at other options for adding classrooms in addition to just taking away the Piney Branch pool. And that will go out tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Councilmember Stewart said what I intended to say, so I won't repeat what she said. It's just that it was a -- just to add that it's a new event on the calendar of festivals, and I think it will become an annual event. There is a very large population of people who hail from South Asia, which is a nebulous area. But this one had to do principally, this festival, with the Hindu festival. But it's a great opportunity for the -- for this community from this part of the world to be able to display their culture and cuisine. And it was a nice turnout for the first event. And this happens with a lot of times with, you know, inaugural events. There's -- it's an experiment because you don't really know exactly how many people are going to show up and how the thing will -- can best be organized. And I'm sure going forward in future years, with the city's help and the direction of the Crossroads Development Authority, that it'll blossom into something quite amazing. That would be my prediction. So it was a good time.
Any other council comments? Seeing none, we'll move along to city manager's comments.
Thank you, just a couple items. Just put my notes down. I think the one thing I wanted to mention is that besides the Diwali festival, yesterday I went to the Montgomery County ADA celebration of 25 years of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And it was a celebration held at the Mid-County Recreation Center. Giving kudos to Emily Cohen, my office. She helped work on the planning committee for that. And although it was small, it was really impressive. It was a nice event. You know, it's one of these things where you realize how important it is as a civil rights legislation and who it gives freedom to. The one fun part was that an area ex Harlem Globetrotter was part of the enjoy -- you know, part of the fun part of the thing. And he put on a little show. His name is -- his nickname is Spiny because he can really spin the basketballs. And he pulled me out, and I had two pens in my hand, and he had spinning basketballs on both. And that was an impressive picture of me. Anyway, that was my thrill of yesterday. But I also enjoyed going then from -- to that, to the Diwali festival. And it was a nice event. I think that will continue. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Rayle?
It sounds like the city manager's learning to juggle something new.
I'm not good at that one yet, I have to say. My son wants -- my son asked me about it, so...
I just wanted to ask, following up on the mayor's proclamation of Small Business Saturday, whether for next year's proclamation -- whoop, let me back up. Whether the city manager could provide statistics on how many small businesses are located in Tacoma Park? And then second, if as part of following year's proclamations, we could use those numbers in some way in the proclamation?
That's good of you. Thank you.
And if I can just double-check on whether there's any update you can provide on the progress on the Dog Park?
To date, the, I guess, two things. One is I've signed off on the agreement with the school district, which is access to help some of their stormwater issues as part of our project. The -- today was the deadline internal in the park and planning, park design office to get all the comments to the project manager from their office. We've not seen the results of that, so I'll have to follow up with her tomorrow or for on Thursday.
Okay. The next item is adoption of minutes. We have one set of minutes this evening for September 15th. Would somebody like to move their adoption?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Mail, second by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are adopted unanimously. We will now move to our regular meeting voting items. The first one up is the Second Reading Ordinance amending Chapter 11.2, Snow and Ice Regulations. And I would suggest that the way to approach this one is rather than moving the second reading, I would elicit any potential changes to the Second Reading Ordinance, and we can have a discussion of those and see if we want to make some amendments, and then we can move it with the amendments. Councilmember Grimes?
Thank you. Well, first, let me thank the council for incorporating an earlier suggested amendment, which I'm going to change in a moment. I'm glad that we could make that adjustment. That was motivated by conversations with people in North Tacoma. Thank you to the three North Tacoma residents who have come out and Ms. Cordis for your very long and detailed perspective on what we're doing here. And of course, we had a conversation a few days ago about the same points. So I look at this and I think what our goals are here. And our primary goal is public safety for walkers in particular. And there's a subtext here, which is to elevate walkers, attention to walkers, concern for walkers to the same, or let's call it a similar, level to what we -- the concern we have for people who are in vehicles. We plow the streets and people do walk on the streets when they can't pass on the sidewalk. But my concern is that people should plow -- I'm sorry, should shovel their sidewalks. I do recognize what people have said, that 8:00 a.m. is pretty early. Personally, I don't have any trouble with getting up a little bit earlier than normal if it has snowed. There's usually lots of warning from the weather forecast people that there is going to be a storm there. Yet I do recognize that there are many individuals who do not shovel their own walks, rather they hire people or they rely on snow angels. And for those people, 8:00 a.m. is very early. So I started to think about what kind of change we could make, different from the one that we've already made, that would give people who do go to work on a given day an incentive to shovel before they go to work, but would also accommodate people who hire snow shovelers or use the snow angels. And what I think works is to -- this is a compromise. What I think works is to delay the shovel-by-hour to 12:00 noon. That just seems a sensible time that should allow for hiring people to shovel walks, and it will give motivation to people who do go to work on a given day. It will give them motivation to shovel before they go to work because it's not at the end of the workday. I would change, therefore, the amendment to, say, 12:00 noon on a day after a night in which snow has fallen or accumulated. And I would remove this business about the city manager shall have the authority. I would make that, for simplicity sake, 12:00 noon every day, including holidays and weekends, including days that schools are closed and the federal government is closed and so on. And the only question in my mind is a requirement for commercial establishments, which is struck out at the bottom of page two, that it seems late, 12:00 noon seems late for commercial requirement, commercial establishment requirement. So I -- we haven't moved the ordinance yet. And my suggestion, though, and I guess I'm inviting response, is 12:00 noon for every day following a night on which snow has fallen or accumulated. And then maybe retain the 9:00 a.m. requirement for commercial establishments. Thank you.
Clarification? Would you retain the -- or by 9:00 p.m. on the day in which it's fallen?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the -- by noon is if snow has fallen overnight.
Other council comments on the Councilmember Grimes' proposal? Councilmember Schultz?
I think that the Councilmember Grimes' proposal makes sense. I'm not as sanguine as he is about the predict -- the accuracy of the weather reports. They seem to be like almost we'd be better off just looking out the front door to decide when it's going to snow. With the weather that we have here peculiar to the mid-Atlantic, it's -- the meteorologists drive -- go crazy pulling their hair out trying to get it correct. So sometimes we go to bed expecting the -- to wake up with the new fallen snow across our lawns and trees and find out that the sun's out and it's -- or it's raining, or the opposite. And so it's a good idea to have this kind of period of time. I know there's a lot of people I know who aren't particularly elderly or particularly disabled, but getting out of bed at 8:00 o'clock in the morning may not be something they can do because of illness or a bad back or other doctor's appointments. And our lives get so filled up with things that -- so I think the idea of being able to -- a little bit of flexibility would, as Mr. Grimes suggests, makes sense. And I'll also suggest that, as far as enforcement goes, I think the point's been nicely spoken about here during the comment period, is that we consider this winter kind of an experiment, that we try to, you know, issue warnings and stuff like that because I'm not sure how this thing's going to be able to be enforced. I'm not sure any of us really know how it's going to be enforced, how easily be enforced, and that those who are given that responsibility might be in situations where it's just not clear whether they should issue a citation or hand out things. And so I think while we're in this experimental stage this winter for this thing, that we probably go lightly on the enforcement, but make sure that we do issue warnings as much as possible and that we keep track of all of that. Because some winters, like when we had this thing come before us, looking at October 13, 2014, it said, this was the report that was published, you know, written by staff, that says the winter of 2013, 14 had seven winter weather events that involve calling public crews into pre-treat streets and plow snow. During some of these events, there was discussion over if and how the no parking provision should be enforced, et cetera, et cetera. So we had those -- that was that winter. But then there's been other winters when we've had almost no snow at all. And then, of course, we had Snowmageddon, which I acutely remember because I had just been elected to the city council for the first time. And the next thing I knew, I felt like I was trying to rescue my whole neighborhood from being buried alive. And that was excitement. So it's a crazy situation, and I just -- I think we just try it this winter, see how it works. We tighten up the screws based on what we learn.
If I can just get a clarification from staff. Councilmember Schultz was saying something about making sure we give a warning first. My recollection is that Ms. Dane said that we basically always give a warning first on these types of infractions.
That's been our traditional approach. I don't anticipate that changing unless, I think, we come back and talk about it and move forward.
Thanks. Councilmember Mail?
Thank you. From the education perspective, I would encourage the city to use the city newsletter in November or December to put something like a half-page ad on one page that describes the importance of snow removal from sidewalks, not from a regulatory perspective, but from a good neighbor perspective. And I bring up the example that I think the county sent around postcards last year to everyone. It was just very positive, all about, you know, doing good by your neighbors, and it's a good place to advertise the snow angels program. Does the city manager, and I realize Ms. Braithwaite is not here, do you have particular views on the timing question we're debating in terms of the amendment?
I certainly -- I'm kind of, I lean a little bit to the earlier side. Noon, I think, is fine. I'm not in favor of a 24-hour shakalaka. I'm not in favor of a 24 hour, 24 hours after a snowfall. I think that's way too long. I certainly encourage people to try to clear things before people have to go to work or school. I think that's the, the very difficult thing, and in general, when there is a delay in school, it's, it's a two-hour delay, and so noon would be past that time. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, and thank you for, people have come out tonight. I think balancing the, I should say, I should pause for a moment and say, I have a 15-year-old and a 12-year-old who leave for school very early in the morning. I also have a 75-year-old mother-in-law who lives on Grand Avenue and has to walk her dog, and she usually shovels or has somebody come shovel for her. So, in my own life, I see the two ends of this. My mother-in-law, who I actually don't want getting up early and shoveling her own walk, but I also see when my 15-year-old, even with a two-hour delay, leaves for school and has to stand at the bus stop. And when people in our neighborhood don't shovel, all the kids walk in the street. So, I lean towards keeping it the earlier time for safety reasons, and reassessing this sometime over the winter. And I would also say that since we, we are giving the warnings first, and the fines aren't being put in place, we can also see how long the list is for the snow angels. Last year, I think, the program worked very well in its inaugural year. I know the difference makers at, that Mr. Garing has, usually has over 100 students who enroll in that club. I'm not, I think it's very popular. I don't think we'll have a shortage of students actually able to go out and shovel. So, I do think we need to weigh both sides of this, but my feeling is, right now, I'd like to err on the side of safety and reevaluate later. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all of the staff's hard work on this. My question regards business establishments. Can you remind us why we struck that out? And?
Well, we had had, we're moving it to an earlier time, so everybody had to do it business establishments as, as well as anyone else.
So, business establishments will have to do it the same time as residents?
That's right.
Or if we make it noon, we can make it earlier for businesses?
Right. Can we, I mean?
It's up to you. You're the, you make the decisions on this.
Okay, well, I-
I will say that depending, you know, we have had the language about the, in front of commercial establishments. Sometimes it's a little tough to determine what's a commercial establishment, but, you know, the ideas that generally they're in places where people need to travel are more likely to travel, so they should be open.
I would suggest that we make it two hours before business establish, establishment opens, that they have to clear their sidewalk.
May I ask?
Yes.
That, that one would be tough, because then we would have to identify what time each business establishment opens. So, from an enforcement point of view, that'd be very difficult.
So, there's no way we could just go and look in, online, or look at the-
Well, certainly we can. It's, that's, that ends up being-
It could be different, we could have 10 different opening times.
Right. That could be very, that could, that could be very time-consuming. I'm sure that the enforcement folks would be busy on other things and not be spending the time during these kinds of periods.
Right, but I, I just don't think it's fair if we allow resident, or require residents to do this at a certain time period, but business establishments that have a lot more resources aren't under some type of requirement to do it, so that a lot of these areas, especially Old Town, that residents have to-
No, they would be required to do it.
They, they have to do it within, by noon, right?
If the way-
I'm suggesting that we reinstate just a line and a half, that sidewalks in front of commercial establishments, establishments shall be kept free of snow and ice at all times between the hour of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m.
Right.
I'm suggesting we reinstate that sentence.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
If that's mine, then-
I mean, actually, it's not rein, well, it is reinstated in this draft. It is retention from the ordinance that's on the books right this moment.
Okay. So, if that's fine, then I'll accept that.
Okay.
Depends on where we end up going.
Yeah, well, Councilmember Stewart doesn't want to do that. She's got a few more lights.
Yes. I just want to say that I was trying to think about how to make it, part, part of the whole effort here has been to clarify the language in the existing code, because there were some, there was some language where it was like, you know, if you, if you have to clear it at this time, or this time, depending on which one's earlier, and it's like, you can't expect people to start parsing the code, so it has to be something simple with a time. And as I was thinking about possible ways to address, giving a little more flexibility, I started thinking about, well, you know, what constitutes night, and what constitutes day, and, you know, should there be hours assigned to it? And the more I got thinking about that, the more I got twisted around the same axle that was in the existing code, and so it just seemed like the simpler, the better, that we know that we have warnings before fines, and the whole point here is public safety, and to get people focused with a simple message on making sure that sidewalks are cleared as early as possible in an appropriate width, to make sure that pedestrians are safe in getting around, because I've seen too many times when we have snowstorms where pedestrians have to walk up, where I see it is on Carroll Avenue, with all the traffic on Carroll Avenue, and buses coming through, and plows coming through, and they're walking in the street either to get to school, or to get to the metro, and it's just not safe. So, I guess I'm not particularly wedded to either the noon timeframe, or the earlier timeframe, but I think we need to do this, see how it works, and keep it as simple as possible. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Grimes' suggestion tonight. I think it addresses the one concern that I had with this, and that is for the, the many people who are not readily able to get out and have it done so early in the morning, and it extends that period of time just a little bit, which I think is reasonable. The other question I had is, the difference makers are providing a service for the seniors and other people who are unable to shovel their walks. Is there anything that we should include in this code to exempt them if the difference makers haven't been able to get to them by that time?
I don't know that we need to put that in the code. It certainly is, was been our practice, it was our practice even this past winter, when we would send people out to do the warnings. They had the list of the addresses for this, the people listed on the snow angels list.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
With regard to the availability of the snow angels, being able to help the, the, those households that need the help, can't do it themselves, most of these are kids, right? And most kids are going to be in school if it's snowing on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. And they're not going to be available to shovel anything until school lets out, and then I'm sure they'll do us a, a good job. So, to sort of say, oh, to, to suggest, I mean, we, we've got to take in that reality, is that there isn't going to be any snow angels out shoveling snow early in the morning. They're going to be on school buses, or being, you know, in schools.
In the, the past year, there were a couple days when there was school, started two hours early, but most of the days, there was no school on the days when they shuffled. So, yes, we have to work with all of the ways that we get by when there's a snowstorm.
Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you. I would just note that with regard to businesses, I looked at the existing code, and the existing code says shall be kept, sidewalks in front of commercial establishments shall be kept clean from 9:00 a.m., so, and so on. So, I would not favor a later period for commercial establishments. I tend to think that I like the language as written in the draft in our agenda packet right now, with 8:00 a.m. on weekdays and 9:00 a.m. on weekends. I guess the other thing in my mind is whether I'd rather, in some ways, simply just leave it to the city manager to set the time, as opposed to specifying the time, and then making it, because we make it harder to change, we make it harder to adapt, we make it harder to, as the mayor was describing, have a policy where we try to make it simple, but where we can figure out, you know, what works. And if we need to bring it back to the council to make another change, then we have to go through this whole process again. So, as I said, I lean toward the language that we have right now, 8:00 a.m. on weekdays, 9:00 a.m. on weekends, with the city manager having the authority to establish a later time for days with closures. But another option is, is simply to take the hours out of the council-pass version of the code and put it into regulation.
Okay. I've heard a couple different opinions. I think the best way to approach this is to ask for a mover and a second, or for what we have on the table that we passed at first reading, and then we'll consider an amendment.
Could we get some feedback from the city manager on the last suggestion before we?
I don't know that I cares if it is in the code or in a regulation. Sometimes it is frankly more difficult to change regulations than code. In whichever case it is, I would want a time, and I would want it well-known, and I think that the idea of changing it around and whatever very much causes problems. That's not to say if we don't see, if we see that there's difficulty with something that we make a change, but I certainly would not want to give the impression to people that on any day, I might change a different time, and that kind of thing. So, I think on this, my preference is for the council to pick the time, and I appreciate that sometimes there may be times when there's a particular emergency that I can say, we're suspending this time, and we're doing something else.
You, you would want to retain this bolded language in the center of the paragraph?
Actually, I think I often have the, the power, whether or not that language is there, to suspend it in a particular case, as it's, as an emergency situation.
Do you want it in there, or do you not care? To me, it would be clearer if it were struck.
I'd prefer it out.
So, would somebody like to move the ordinance as, as we currently have it written in front of us, and then we'll see how we want to change it, if we want to change it? It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Mayo, second by Councilmember Grimes.
And just a clarification, this is-
As written.
As written.
As written, amended before this meeting.
What we have in front of us in the packet?
Right, okay.
Okay. Now, is there an amendment? Councilmember Grimes?
Yes, I move to amend. I move to amend this way. This is 1120030, the second line, so it reads, section 1120020, by 12:00 noon on a day after a night in which it has fallen or accumulated. To strike the long sentence that's at the center of that section, that starts the city manager and ends or is closed, and to retain the second to last sentence, which reads, sidewalks in front of commercial establishments shall be kept free of snow and ice at all times between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So, the three parts, to change it to 12:00 noon on a day after which it has fallen or accumulated, strike that central, central sentence, and unstrike sidewalks in front of commercial establishments. That's the motion to amend.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Siemens. Discussion of the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. All those opposed? Okay. The amendment passes five to two. Are there any other amendments? Okay. Discussion on the ordinance is amended. Councilmember Mayo?
Not per se on the language of the ordinance, but I would just repeat the comment that was brought up by a resident tonight about the city at some point between now and the likely beginning of snowfall, providing a written description back to council and the public about how you expect to go out about enforcement. It doesn't need to be highly technical, just a, just a quick, like a city manager, weekly update sort of style description. Thank you.
Yes.
And with that, what Councilmember Mayo suggested earlier about educational outreach effort, maybe in the city newsletter for December, regarding especially the neighborliness angle.
And, and I'll just add that I think it would be good for the next council to think about an update on how this is going, when and if there's a snowfall this winter, just to see, and, and see whether anything needs to be adjusted. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. And, and the information that's put in the newsletter, could we also stress and ask residents who live near bus stops to make sure, particularly on Carroll Avenue, where the largest Blair High School bus stop is smack in the middle of the street there? If we could just stress that they clear their sidewalks, that would be good. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Which reminds me that our new contract with the company that maintains the bus shelters requires them to clean out-
For their shelters.
For their shelters, the ones that they're responsible for.
Did we have a time on that, or just that they're responsible?
There was, there was a time in there.
Okay. Good. All right. Any other comments? All those in favor, let's see, it has to be a roll call vote. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item is, agenda item number two, which is second reading ordinance authorizing installation of traffic common on 600 block of Boston Avenue. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Yes.
Where did he go?
I know. Moved by Councilmember Mayo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Stewart. Any comments on this second reading? It's unchanged from the first.
There's no change.
Okay. It's the second reading ordinance. It'll require a roll call vote. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Councilmember Grimes? Where'd he go?
He's gone.
Just go very slowly.
I have a question.
No, we're in the middle of the roll call. Council, Councilmember Grimes, are you going to vote yes?
Yes, I read it.
No, no, I'm the Boston Avenue.
On the next-
Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes six to one. The next item is agenda item three, a second reading ordinance authorizing execution of repayment and move taxes for, it would matter at 1100 Linden Avenue. Somebody want to move that?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, second by Councilmember Mayo. Discussion, comments? Councilmember Mayo?
Quick comment that the link on the website is broken, and the second is, are there any changes in the agenda item from the last?
There are no changes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, it's a second reading ordinance. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, with the three senior members of the council voting aye, and the four junior members voting yes.
How can you keep track of things like that, listening?
You know the important parts.
The last item is agenda item number four, single reading ordinance authorizing execution of contract for services for rent analysts. Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Schultz, second by Councilmember Grimes.
Just, I can just say a few words. Mr. Bar has been our rent analyst for a number of years. We did go out for a request for proposals, because we periodically do that, to keep things, to keep things fresh. We did send it up to five firms that we believe would be qualified to provide this services. However, Dr. Bar was the single respondent to the proposal. We did double-check with the references, even though we've known him for a long time, he gets very strong recommendations for this type of work, and we recommend approving an extension, a new contract with him for the rent analyst position.
Councilmember Mayo? Councilmember Mayo.
Could the city manager just in three or four sentences explain for the public what a rent, rents analyst does?
Actually, I'm going to turn that over to Linda Walker. I would say something wrong if I said it.
Yep. The rents analyst is a component of the Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs, and when a landlord wishes to increase the rents more than the rent stabilization allowance, he's required to file a fair return rent increase petition. And this is a compilation of all of the operating and maintenance expenses for the property for the last three years. And so he analyzes all of the information that's presented and, you know, makes a decision on the matter and comes up with a, you know, a percentage or, you know, if he's eligible for a rent increase based on a net operating cost for the property. So in the past four years, we've had six petitions that were filed by landlords, and none this year. But we do training for landlords in regard to the fair return petition. So we've done two trainings this past year, and there are some landlords who, who probably will file next year.
Thank you.
And can you just say a couple of words about, my recollection is that this kind of replaced the capital improvement?
It incorporates the capital improvement petition process as well as the fair return petition process. And capital improvement, the separate capital improvement process was eliminated, but landlords do incorporate capital improvements into the fair return petition.
Good. Thank you.
Is $125 an hour, the same rate we're currently paying under the contract or a different rate?
It's an increase of $25 per hour.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. The?
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. The six petitions that we've received over, what you said, four years, could you characterize the scale of those properties? Were they just a single family with a rent or were they large apartment buildings or, or was there any pattern at all?
Two, two of them were large properties. One was Hillwood Manor, and another one was Carroll Gardens, right up here on Lee and Hancock.
Right.
The other properties were smaller properties.
Okay.
You know, four to six units.
I see.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. This is a single reading ordinance. Will clerk please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and that's our final item for this evening's agenda. Having no other business, we're adjourned.
It's a good event. Who's your birthday? At least I try to affect my eyes and my eyes.
I heard, I heard.